It is seven P M. So I will call the meeting to order. Before we get started, I just want to let you all know that this is a special meeting. Therefore, anything not on the agenda will not be discussed or addressed this evening. Our job is to present a fiscally responsible and reasonable recommendation within the limits of Prop 46 for the fiscal twenty one, twenty two budget. To taxpayers for their approval, it's been discovered that there was a discrepancy in the assessors net report on the grand list. So therefore, we have to make adjustments at the time right now. It's a minimum of thirty two thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars that we must reduce our budget by to come in under the new calculation Prop forty six number. So we will we'll move on and call roll. Mr. Tomorrow here, Mr. Forden, President, Mr. Kelleher.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi is absent due to work and he has asked that this was continued in his place. Brad. Brian. Mr. Bradrick.
Present.
Okay. Mrs. Wise.
Here.
And Mrs. Perkins Carter. And myself, Chairman Michael Darn. Okay, that taken care of. We do not need to seat an alternate. No, she was predetermined by her take us. So we're all set there. I will give the public common instructions. As I said earlier, the only thing we're discussing tonight is the adjustment to the budget to comply with the limitations of Proposition forty six. Nothing else will be discussed. So if in fact you decide that you want to make a comment regarding anything else, we save that for our June eighth meeting. Also, we will not be discussing any personnel issues or anything else as regarding this current situation. That is something that will be addressed down the road. If you're calling in on a cell phone and you wish to comment during that time, you can hit star nine. If you are on board with us with Zoom here, you can either raise your hand or you can go to the chat function and type a remark or question in at any time. Again, as I said, they will be limited strictly to the adjustment of the budget. And I will move on to new business, the only business. I to beg discuss and act on adjusting the fiscal year twenty two combined budgets based on the recent changes to the twenty twenty grand list and to recommend the Board of Selectmen warrant a town meeting. And now I will open it up to anyone who may have a proposal. I'll start with Mr. Tomorrow. Do you have anything inside?
No, not this one.
Mr. Forden.
I I'm holding back on a proposal here, but I would like to comment that prior to to Mrs. It's back sending out new documents. I did a fair amount of work looking at our former proposal and I have concerns about the loan money that we were going to transfer in from the unreserved general fund. Considering that we had done that last year in an effort to minimize tax implications for the citizens based on the pandemic. So I have concerns about that. I did do some work. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that I did may not be quite right, or I should say the numbers have changed based on what Karen's given us here tonight. My concerns are still the same. I think that the budget's too high and the amount that we're going to need to transfer in is going to cause us grave issues going forward. That's my comment at this point. I'd like to hear all the other members speak over time and then perhaps I might have a proposal.
All right, Mr. Kelleher.
Um, well, I guess a question is, or do, since the the original proposal we had was not at the limit of Prop forty six, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
So theoretically, we don't have to cut anything or do or is the assessment change to the point where we do need to cut something?
No, we, at this time, we have to, we have to cut a minimum of thirty two thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
Had we gone to the higher Prop forty six limit, right now we would be discussing cutting one hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and five dollars.
All right, that's what I thought. I just wanted to double check.
We're actually eighty eight thousand and twenty dollars under the Prop forty six limit on our last recommendation.
Okay, I guess if there's time for either the first selectman or the school to chime in as to how well they could absorb the cuts that we're going to need to make, I'd like to hear from them. I mean, I know nobody wants to cut their budget, but I'm just, you know, if we're going to make an informed decision, I would like to hear a little from them.
If I may, let me go through the rest of the first and then we'll give the selectmen an opportunity to speak as well as whomever is representing the Board of Ed. Mr. Bradrick.
I am having a difficult time with hearing people because of the echoes in the town hall. So if I'm repeating myself or something that someone else has said, I apologize. I think we need to cut this budget by ninety one thousand seven hundred dollars under the maximum allowable. And the reason for that is I'm using the well reasoned numbers and logic from fellow member Dave Fortin. Dave Fortin decided, or actually we decided after Dave gave the information that the maximum increase of three quarters of a mil would be reasonable. I still think that's too high, but given what's going on, I would not oppose anything beyond that. However, the other problem we have is how much are we going to take from our our funds? And the old budget assumed we would take four hundred seventy three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Now, if you add five, three, six, zero, eight, one, which is three quarters of a mil to four, seven, three, one, ninety, that gives a yield of a million dollars, one million, zero, zero, nine, two, seven, one. And that would be, at least in my opinion, the maximum we could put in here to address the revenue shortfall. That would require a budget cut under the maximum allowable. We're not taxing to the max. I believe that that's been discussed before. We didn't go to the maximum Prop forty six limits before, and I don't think we should do that now. So I would take the max allowable budget of twenty five, two, oh, three, five, eleven, and I would reduce that by ninety one thousand seven hundred dollars. And that equals the logic behind Dave Fortin's numbers that we approved as being reasonable just a short time ago before this all blew up on our faces. Thank you.
All right, so just let me just check that number with you again, right? So you're saying we would reduce the budget by thirty two thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars to meet the max Prop forty six and then an additional ninety one thousand seven hundred dollars? So what we're looking at is a total of one hundred and twenty three thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars?
Yeah, you did the math. My calculator is down, but that sounds good.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Was.
Um. I just mostly concern I'm concerned about whole budgets, but I already I know they already had to cut to full time. We're getting into salary personnel. Decisions and obviously.
A reminder, you need to speak. Thank you.
This is Perkins Carter.
Well, I don't have a proposal at this time, but I do have a question about the implication of this, which I want to do as a group similarly.
All right, well, I I have actually two proposals that that I was considering. There were probably a dozen more in between. But basically, the first proposal would be to meet the Prop forty that was one if we were stuck to that point. And my second proposal would have been to remove the entire shortfall, which pretty much falls in line with Mr. Bradrick's suggestion. Because that would be the one hundred twenty thousand two hundred and five dollars, which is the actual shortfall on the net end based on the grand list. Whatever way the board chooses to go between either of those two, I could live with. And that's, that's my proposal this time. And now I would allow the selectmen, if he has anything to say on behalf of their budget.
Well, I, the only thing I would say, Jeff, and answer to your initial question is if we were looking at the initial cut of thirty two thousand and change, we would manage that. Now I will rescind that comment because I think it's up to the Board of Finance to determine what the final number is. Once you determine, then you will direct me and the Board of Ed what changes to make. We'll just have to make it. So I think it's up to you initially to figure out what the budget is going to be, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. All right, someone from the Board of Ed want to make a comment?
Hi, this is Megan.
Megan, how are you?
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you guys could hear me. So while I certainly respect what Jay had to say, and I do understand that the Board of Finance does have the decision making power as far as what the bottom line will be. I do want you all to be aware, I'm not quite sure if you are, that we have currently in our budget removed three three teachers that we are not able to fit underneath any of the grants. So any additional cuts will also be personnel. And I realize that this has been said before, but with hope you all did receive the compare and contrast about what we can move under a grant versus what we will have to move completely from the budget. And once we start removing personnel, we of course have class sizes. And we of course have programs that will be going with it as well. And at a time when we are supposed to be focused on bringing our students back into schools fully and offering them all the programs we possibly can, as well as additional support in the classroom, cutting our budget any further will just continue to prohibit our ability to do that. And with a possibility, really hurt our students as well as our staff. So I hope you consider going to the max of Proposition forty six and considering what to do with that balance of it. Is it roughly thirty two thousand dollars that would need to be reduced to meet to that cap? Thank you. And if you're not, if you actually don't have that handout, please let me know and I can make sure to get it to you.
All right, thank you. All right, Charlie, is there a comment you wanted to make?
Well, actually, I was when the change happened to the grand list, which I think I read correctly.
Yeah, Charlotte, you really need to speak up.
I was looking at the change to the grand list and it looks like it was happened in November of twenty twenty, which is this present fiscal year, which ends in June. And I wonder if there's any ramifications for the fiscal year that we are presently in because I think Emily should be here or assess her, and I think she would be best to answer that because I personally don't see that affecting us because the Crabtree was on the twenty nineteen grand list, which is what we're currently collecting. I know that the tax collector is still in the process of collecting that personal property from them, but I think they would be best to to explain it to. So I just didn't, I just wondered if we were going to have a surprise here.
Mrs. This is right. We don't need any more.
Does Emily or Linda want to chime in?
I don't know if Emily is there. If she is, she can certainly speak for me, but as far as the grand list nineteen goes, Crabtree is responsible for that bill. Personal property is not prorated and they were in business in Woodstock on October one of nineteen. So the bill they got last July of twenty is covering them from October one nineteen to October one twenty. They were not on the grand list on October one twenty, so or shouldn't be because they had already moved out in March. Once you're on that grand list, you pay for the whole year. What's that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Is Emily there?
I am here. That is correct. What Linda had stated.
Okay, is there anything you would like to add to that? Or?
I have nothing else to add. That is correct.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so you've heard from the Boards of Selectmen and the Board of Education, their concerns. And now we're open to suggestions or proposals, discussion of. Okay, so if you don't mind, initially, I didn't want to say a whole lot because I want to give everybody else an opportunity to speak here. And I just want to know as a member of the Board of Finance, and I'm not sympathetic, I just want everybody to know I'm not not unsympathetic to the issues or needs of the Board of Ed or the Board of Selectmen. What I'd like to know is what is our plan as a Board of Finance to dig ourselves out of the hole we've created? The total, the total amount, if we reduce the budget to the max of forty six is one million, one hundred thousand nine hundred and seventy one based on the last document that Karen passed out. I don't think anybody here in this room or any people watching our Zoom meeting think that we're going to be able to raise the mill rate by that much. That's going to require an a appropriation from the unreserved general fund. That money does not get budgeted every year to go in that fund. That's an accumulation of savings that are taking place largely from the Board of Selectmen, internal transfers.
Can I make a, might elaborate a little bit on what you're saying?
Karen.
Sure.
Karen.
Yeah, I just to elaborate on what Dave's trying to say, over the last three years, we have literally taken approximately two point six million from the general fund to offset the last three budgets. You know, we've gone from a fifteen point three percent fund balance, we're down to a twelve point nine one as of fiscal year twenty. We're in the midst of coming to a closure on our fiscal year twenty one. We still have approximately three million in expenditures and a current fund balance of about a little over five million. So every time we take from that general fund, it's the extra revenues and collections that help put it back. But if Linda collects more taxes, but we don't get the other end from all the other revenues that we budgeted, we don't have any more funds to go. Currently, we need one point five four mils in order to pass this budget, and there is no way that we're going to get out of it because you're not going to go to a one point five mil increase. I don't think so. So I think we're still at this stage where we're going to have to continue to take from the general fund, which again will reduce our surplus.
When you, forgive me for having the back and forth with Karen, but I think some questions may help clarify things for the board member. So how do we grow that fund?
Normally it's from savings or we, you know, getting more collections than what we budgeted, so then it's a surplus. So over the last few years, we did have some surpluses like education cost here grant. We were receiving more money. Now we're getting to the point where we're kind of flat. What concerns me is I received something, it's very vague. I'm not saying that it's written in stone, but I'm going back and forth. I'm looking at stuff that I'm receiving regarding the state budget and our governor's proposing one amount, which is what we budgeted, which was four point nine million. And now the commission is talking about reducing that another two point four percent, which I think is approximately about a hundred and nineteen thousand. Then we don't get that from state is another hundred and twenty thousand we're going to have to be. We don't want our fund balance to go below ten percent. The estimates that I gave Mike today, it comes up to right now about eleven percent. That quick calculation, we don't know until we get towards the end of fiscal year. Linda still has two more months to collect. I believe after speaking with Linda today, anything she collects from this point on would be considered a surplus because she's made her budget for current taxes.
So to continue this discussion, so these these monies that we take out year over year are still built into the following year's budget.
Right, so what we've been doing is each year when there is a surplus, you know, you have two, you have two fund balances. You have an unassigned fund balance, then you have an actual fund balance. The difference between the two is the funding you use to commit to your next year's budget. So if you say if you have a four million dollar fund balance, but you committed eight hundred thousand to help fund the next year's budget, your unheavenated or un, I'm sorry, unassigned is three point two. So we've already been utilizing money each year from the surplus to help fund, but then we're not raising the mill rate to make up the difference. So it's kind of like we're just constantly digging ourselves deeper and deeper in debt. And what happens is when we don't have an adequate surplus, we don't have the funds for these C N R projects, then we have, are forced to have to go to more bonding. And then we have nothing but debt and then we have very little revenue. So my personal opinion, it's not that I want everybody's taxes to go skyrocketing, but at some point, if we don't stop raising this mill rate to accommodate, we're going to not have enough sufficient funds in our reserve. I don't think three point five million is really considered a lot of money in a reserve. We spend that sometimes in one month.
So besides, sure. Given the numbers you were saying, it sounds like for the last two or three years, we've been withdrawing more than we've been putting in.
I have written down some actual information here with me, so.
Just a rough answer.
Yeah, two point six million. So this year alone, they'd be, so in fiscal year nineteen, we used seven hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty six. Fiscal year twenty, we took seven hundred and thirty five, five thirty two. And this current budget ending June of twenty five million out of the general fund because we have not raised the mill in three years. So whenever we don't raise the mill a little bit to absorb some of the loss, we're just digging ourselves deeper.
And then it's going to be over here. So we're just waiting.
And then what happens too is like the interest rates are terrible right now, so then our investments go down. We're not reaping the benefits of the interest. We're getting the benefits on the home sales because the conveyance tax is going with, but we can't guarantee that's going to happen next year. We're in a, you know, we're in a housing frenzy right now. That's not guaranteed. So yes, I'm saying that if we continue to dip into the general fund, you're going to deplete it at some point. I don't think it's fear to anybody to not raise, I mean, I understand we have financial hardships, we, you know, we've seen this pandemic. You know, I'm not saying, you know, raise it one point five mils, but perhaps if we had grown, you know, did a little bit of increments in the last couple of years to try to make up some of the difference, we would probably have a better. That's my ending.
Yes. All right. If we go into the general fund, we're looking at some projects down the road, some capital stock. And if we go into the general fund, how does that affect our bond rate? While we in the future.
It'll definitely, it'll definitely affect it because that's, that's one of the primary things they look at. And that's my concern. Yeah, that's one of my concerns.
And we're going to be facing.
Correct.
Correct. And also what we're facing is we are getting ready, and it's been a little bit prolonged due to some small issues, but we are in the process of taking out a two point five million dollar bond. So next year, if we can take it out now, next year will increase our debt. Next year is also a rebuild. We calculate Prop forty six differently. It could hurt us or not. We don't really know that yet until we see that grand list. So the more debt we incur and the less surplus we have, our ratings are going to go down, which means higher interest payments and that makes us less desire to want to be.
David, go ahead and finish up. Continue with your question. Yeah, so I'm bringing up these points because I think that as a, as a board, the Board of Finance has a responsibility to look at the overall fiscal health of the, of the community. And I think that we're in a trend right now that's not sustainable for a lot much longer period of time. I mean, we may be able to push it off for a year or something, but I think a correction needs to be made. And that's going to be a probably a combination of budget cuttings, decreases in transfer amounts and mill rate increases all at the same time to try to right the ship. We can't simply raise the mill rate greater than we need to fund the budgets because that, once we make up our difference, will be overtaxing the citizens. You can sum small amount every year to try to compensate and at some point go back in the other direction, decrease the mill rate. If I'm, if I'm making sense to everybody, you don't want to overshoot the mark. The, the, I'm not happy about being the bearer of this, but the truth of the matter is that our increases are fast, outpacing our revenue stream. We have no, we have no defined increases in our revenue stream that we can see. We don't have an actual landfill. We don't have a whole lot industry going into town. We've got residential homes. Other than that, there's nothing that's going to raise our, our revenue stream. So we got to start making an adjustment. Unfortunately, the only addition that we generally seem to have to our revenue stream is additional housing. But when we get a six or seven thousand, eight thousand dollar tax benefit from a new home, that's generally a three or four bedroom house, which comes with kids, and it increases the cost to the education system at a rate which far, far outpaces what it paid in taxes. I'd like to bring up a couple of other quick points and then I'll be quiet so somebody else can speak. We need to consider that we have a request for appropriation to or a deed, Karen can correct me on this, a hundred sixty one thousand dollars, which will for insurance. Um, for insurance.
Yeah, I think it's 162,000 that is being requested from the Board of Ed, from the Reserve.
And it's just gonna drain that account, would not be accessible in the next.
So having a shortfall next year.
Basically, that will cover fiscal year 21. They do have another proposal for the balance of about 164,000 for this upcoming 22. And then we should be done, the account should be closed.
Right, but that's what we're talking about. 21, 22. After that, definitely, there is no more money available, which means the. Board of Ed is already gonna need to absorb that cost. I'm sure if I sit here for a little while, I can come up with a few other, because there's a few other things hanging out there on the horizon, one of which. Uh, Karen brought up the, the bonding issue. Correct. Additional debt service. Additional debt service. That's right. We're not gonna take. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody on the board fully understood what we're talking about here. It's not just a question of reducing the budget to the Prop 46 max. It's much more of a forward thinking. Adjustment to our trajectory that we should be considering. Thank you. Did, did you wanna make a proposal? Well, I think we should discuss this.
Well, yeah, we can, but I mean, you can throw it out there and then we'll, we could uh.
Sure, if I was gonna make a proposal tonight, and this is not a move, and I would say we take the, the two budgets. And we bring them back to where they were in 2021, last fiscal year. And then we add the redemption of debt. Okay. Some scroll up, maybe it's side over there. Then we would add the, the current redemption debt would be 300,855, which would give us a minimum budget required for our operations. The 2022 budget of 24,504,004 dollars. Then if we go back to the last meeting where the original motion was to go to 66% of Prop 46. That would be 369,992 dollars. Of the um. Allowable 560, or basically would be a hundred thousand dollar, roughly a hundred thousand dollar cut to each budget. That would bring us down to a, a revenue shortfall of about 771. Then we have to determine our next meeting, how we would pay for that. A, a mill is 7, 7, 14, I forget the 775. Right. So this revenue shortfall, I'm talking about the 1.08 mils versus 1, say Karen, 1.5. So it would still require some drawdown of the. About, that's what I was shooting for half. I was thinking it should be a two-year plan. Rather than hit everybody with a massive cuts. We start to, we start everybody thinking about what they're gonna need to do with um, these cuts. And probably we'll have to decide our next meeting, go for a fairly, probably for this 0.88 mil rate that, that. You had put down in your document and the rest.
The original, and then I reworked it again. And, and that's one thing I wanted to explain if anybody um, that's not here in person has a question. A lot of the documentation that gets up ahead of time onto the website is all grass because we are working numbers almost daily. So some of the numbers I presented again this evening to the board do not. Probably um, that, you probably don't have those. So if anybody has any questions or would like updating copies, feel free to email me tomorrow and I'll be more than happy to send copies out.
Any other questions? Question? Can you say a hundred thousand dollar cut to each budget? You're talking about a hundred thousand dollar reduction to the prior year's budget or from the year's proposed budget? Like, not proposed budget, but from what, where we are here.
It would be. From what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
What, what I'm suggesting is we go back to where we were. And then forget about all the other proposals, go back to what was approved last year and then take. 369,000, which is 66% and then split it.
So the increase is, it's a reduction and an increase, not a reduction.
Correct.
That'll be clarified.
Yeah, it'll still be an increase over last year's budget.
Okay, so then the new budget you're talking would be approximately 24,873,996 combined. Correct? Total budget after adding 66% of Prop 46 calculated.
But then you subtract out the 473, which I had done. I hadn't seen your numbers when I did this here. So this needs a little bit of work from your end. You might wanna stare at that for a few minutes.
I, I don't have that.
I know.
I may, I may, I may, let's. So.
You'll also see in the redemption debt in the right hand column, nice pull up. The decrease to 138.
Yeah, that's correct. For the time, okay, that's correct. We pulled out the 138 because debt was 439,768. We pulled out the 138, so that's correct. Minimum budget, 25.
24. 24, 504, oh, 40, 40 would just be for operations. And then you, that's what you would need just for the operations. And then you write your increase, which would be 66% of Prop 46.
Yep. Well, that means, so that means the total budget would be 24,873.
996.
And if we have 24, yeah, so the revenue shortfall is a lot better than 1.1 million. That's for sure. So, so basically we're getting a. We're gonna split the 369,992 based on.
There's some scenarios down in the lower right hand corner. You know, what, what we might wanna do or not do. I think so, unless Karen, do you?
No, I mean, at the end of the day, um, I, I wanna make a statement if it's okay. I, I understand, you know, the, the Board of Ed um, got to speak about some of their shorts and cuts. You know, over the past three years, um, since the town hall hours were reduced, you know, we have a lot of shortages on our end too. We're a very busy town hall. We have had an excessive amount of building going on. Um, a, a prior administration did away with our whole town planner and minions. We're trying to rebuild that. There's not enough hours. Our tax collector has a part-time um, individual. Again, not enough hours. We're trying to make that full-time. You know, these are services that we will probably have to look at cutting as well. Because I, I don't know who will be able to absorb that big cut, you know, um. We're all, we're all working on a four-day work week. Some of us. Five days with pay because we have to get our jobs done. We are running the town, the people that work for the town hall. Um, you know, and I, and I just think that it's, there's, there's other aspects of. Services that townspeople are depending on and, and I think the town hall is. It's getting better than maybe a year or so ago, but I, I feel like we're still struggling to, you know, we're, we're really having a hard time. And on our end, you know, you're looking at these important numbers, I scrambled to get these. On such a short notice. And that's what's happening because we're all under this short hours. And we're all scrambling and, and now you're seeing things with short staff in the assessor's office. So now you're seeing mistakes happening, you know, and, and there's, there's no fault to anybody other than we don't have enough opportunity to staff these departments properly. So if we keep having cuts on this end, we're not gonna be able to provide the services I know. So I just, I just wanted to make that be, be aware because. Um, when, when cuts are being made, and I understand cuts have to be made. But you know, we're, we are struggling to trying to, trying to get our jobs done.
Fred, question today.
Yeah.
Um, when you reduced the education general government budget, it's quite a lot you did. How did you allocate those? You know, is that 50 bits a square or?
Are you finding it open the right hand side, Fred?
Uh, in left side compared to right.
The left side is what Karen.
19.7 and it went to 19.2 roughly. And how did you allocate those two?
I didn't. The, the 19.7 is what was proposed in our last meeting.
Right.
19.205, 251 is what we approved in fiscal year 2021.
Okay.
That whole right hand column.
Is 2021.
Well, the first two, the first two items, the general government and the education.
Okay.
And then the redemption of debt is the 2020, 21, excuse me, 22 number that we have to meet this year. So when I add those together, I come up with a minimum operating budget, as if there was no increase whatsoever. And then I took two-thirds of the Prop 46 allowable. And if you look down at the table on the right hand side, there's, there's a whole bunch of scenarios there. I only used the, the top one, the two-thirds, and I added that in. Which gave us a total budget um, of 24,873,99604.
Okay, and then you did an 85, 15, 85 split connect to the.
Yeah, I did 15, 85 in that scenario. We could create any scenario we want, but I was trying to keep this all on one sheet of paper, so. I was gonna build a table, but. Man, I have time.
One more thing I'd like to point out, and I know it's a sore subject, but we have to also remember that. In the Board of Ed's budget, they don't have the capital assessment, which is gonna dish, what, 219,000?
Yeah, that's right.
So if um, if they have to make these cuts and then that 219,000 doesn't get approved. From CNR funds, then they're gonna have to go back and cut an additional 219,000. I personally feel that. We should go to the allowable, make the 32,200 in cuts, but I think that it's time we have to raise the mill rate. I think that's one of the biggest things. Um, people want services in this town. They have to eventually pay them. We're hurting our case of eight because we're not gonna be able to afford to prepare them to go to the next level up at the academy. We can't control the academy costs. We have a building official running around. We have so much building going on. We have, like I said, short staff in the town hall. People are working extra hours with no pay. We, we can't even meet the needs and the demands of the townspeople based on planning and zoning and wetlands and, you know. Eventually, we're not gonna be able to do our jobs and there's legal ramifications on that end too. We have to be able to have proper funding to be able to actually run the town. And personally, I think that the way we need to do it is yes, we're gonna have to stop talking about. Raising the mill rate. If the budget doesn't pass, although we don't wanna come back to this again, I think then that we have no other way but to make more cuts.
I'm not suggesting for the record that we don't raise the mill rate.
No, I know, I know.
I'm talking about a combination.
Yeah, that's a huge hit.
It's, and that's only after hit.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at here, what I'm talking about here and, and I'm, I didn't come in here expecting them to settle with anybody to, to vote for this. Bringing it forward so that we can think about things going forward. This would be a two-year plan to right the ship. As far as the, the unreserved general fund. Begin raising the mill rate to what we need to do to cover our expenses and so that our budget is solid year over year. I'm done.
Fred? No, I'm just.
Karen?
No, just a question that I have.
All right, Mr. Keller.
Um, if I may, just for the point of discussion, uh, I'd like to make a motion. Um, that we set the budget at the max allowable of Prop 46, um, which would be 25,203,511 dollars. Um, and the, the 30, uh, what was the, roughly 30? To do that, there was uh, 32,185. I'd take 80% of that and have the Board of Ed take it from theirs and 20 and have the Board of, uh, the selectmen take it from theirs. Um, I'm just making the, the motion for the sake of discussion and, and just putting it out there.
All right, well, you did make it as a motion, so does anyone care to second that motion?
I'll tell you the motion.
All right, for the discussion.
I'm a bit twisted between us because I agree with a lot of the points that David made. But I don't think we can right the ship in two years. That's where we have this disconnect. And we're suffering from the fact that we haven't, well, from several things. It's not just because we haven't raised the mill rate for the past three um, budget seasons. It's because we do have challenges with revenue in this town. And that's not gonna change anytime, time soon. And we, we have a, a board of education, it's like it's a bottom of. Crossful people spending this day. We have a thinly-run town hall budget. And I wouldn't feel much differently if we were looking at this, having this discussion and, and you know, we were kind of. Cutting out slot in things that are extra scary, things that were just luxuries, but we're actually getting down to like necessity. And we're playing things that are necessary to run, to run our, our government and our, and our schools. And you know, we have other things that are coming up, right? Like the ECS, the scaling is gonna start to take effect and probably this year if not. So that's gonna take a different education budget. There are a lot of long-term things that are reading that are scary. And so is it harder to go to the max and, you know, go out and ask for all the full mill? I don't know. Yeah, it's hard to do that. I think we kind of. But these should give people the opportunity. Because there are a lot of things coming up. So that's just how I view it. I, I think we're kind of doing a disservice if we don't want to max and we're doing a disservice if we don't put that. Mill rate, because we, we need to move from somewhere to run, to run these things.
Mr. Breivik, do you have anything?
I, I'm not happy about the concept of taxing to the max. Thank you.
Good. Fred, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I mean, I, I agree with, second the motion, not just the discussion, but, but second as an agreement. That we need to move to the max. I mean, we've kind of been under it for a while, uh, and we pay the price and we just can't keep doing that.
Yeah.
Um, I remember last year because of the pandemic. We talked about not going up because of hardships that everybody was experiencing, even though it was a rough year last year. Um, we, we can't keep doing it. I understand the principle behind Prop 46. But I would say for a town like Woodstock. That has very little chance of growing the grand list except for. As Mike said. It will be only housing and also then puts additional strain on the education budget. I just don't think it's working and I think we have to come up with some. Alternative. Whether that means that the limits are a different commodity, I think Fred and I talked one time about maybe the commodity should be the increase in the mill rate. As opposed to the increase in the grand list. I remember that conversation from a couple of years ago. Um, but I think we've got to start to, to look at solutions that we can, we'll do on municipal level. And thirdly, we've, we've got a changing demographic in town. We now have almost 8,000 people living here. Um, they're coming from places where they expect certain kinds of services. Let's spray their lawns for ticks. I mean. Somebody asked me that question. I said, I'm not gonna spray their lawns for ticks. So, so there's kind of the, the expectation that services will be delivered in a reasonable way. Is there perhaps more starling than it was before. And lastly, the other point I'd like to make is um. We're, we're sitting here under what, 13, 14 different state mandates for various. Services in education, but also we've got uh, things like the dam at Crystal Pond and, and other things like that. Um, there is only so much municipality can do. Right now, we've kind of hopped high. And so it doesn't help answer the question tonight. I'm just saying that I think that we need to work on a solution going forward, waiting for the next budget.
If, oh, I got, go ahead, Dave, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to say our, our purpose here tonight is only to decide what the budgets are gonna be.
That's correct.
How we pay for it. How we pay for it's gonna come with the next.
Correct.
A lot of the points I brought up tonight is for us to think about, what are we gonna do with the next meeting? People are gonna go to the polls and, and for whatever reason, whatever thing they feel passionate about or that they think's important to them. They're gonna vote a certain way. But they may not realize the full ramifications that when we sit down. A week or two or two weeks from now and have to make a decision.
But they we have to have a proposed milk increase to go with that question. So I.
Okay, so that's gonna be a second part of this discussion tonight.
We have to have a discussion about that tonight about a proposed. Doesn't mean it happens because we all know that if the if the budget passes, you can change. Your decision, but I need to have, we have to have some kind of.
Something to gauge, something to gauge it by so that when the people vote.
They know.
They're you're not saying that that uh, we're going to the limit, but there won't be any increase. We're saying that there's probably gonna be something in the neighborhood of point seven five or point eight mil. And then we will decide after that.
Right.
What it's actually worth saying.
If it doesn't, we go back.
Correct. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Yes. Kevin?
Yeah, just the point I wanted to make is we're not setting the budget tonight. We're putting something for the the voters to decide on.
That's.
Can I? I feel comfortable saying let's go to the max of prop forty six because it's gotta be voted on. We're not making that decision. Um, I think that's a starting point. If it gets voted down, so be it, then we have to make cuts. Um, I just. Assuming that the Board of Ed and the the selectmen are telling us the truth, if they each have to make a hundred thousands or so dollars in cuts. That's that's gonna have a a huge impact and before we decide uh, to take that step, I think we the the people of Woodstock should vote on it and and that's all I got to say about that.
All right, well, here's the deal. Anybody have anything else? Well, we do have a motion on the floor. We have a second. No one has any additional discussion? I guess we'll uh. All promote. Mr. Jamar.
Hi.
Mr. Forten. Nay. Mr. Keller.
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick.
Nay.
Mrs. Woz.
Aye.
And I also vote nay. So. The motion doesn't pass. But I would like to follow that up with another motion. If I may. And I would move that uh. We don't go exactly to the. Limit of prop forty six. With the new commitment, but we go. Right in the ballpark. Uh. As I said, that's something I could accept to let the uh. The taxpayers uh, deal with. They would decide whether we're gonna go that route or not. Uh, so my my uh. Motion would be to cut the uh. Current recommendation that we had by thirty two thousand two hundred dollars. Which would give us a total budget of twenty five million. Two hundred, three thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars. That's fifteen dollars short of. Prop forty six, but it makes it easy to round things out and I would suggest that the uh. Each budget, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education uh, be cut. Under that proposal by sixteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Each.
Each. That is my motion.
Mike, can you repeat the uh, total budget that you came up with?
Uh, the total would be twenty five, two oh three, four ninety six. All right, we have a second.
Two oh seven seven?
Yes. No.
Twenty five.
Twenty five, two oh three, four nine six. All right, Mrs. Woz has seconded, so I will open it up for discussion. Mr. Jamar.
So you just chewed out.
I'm just right, just to. Make things.
That's the first one. I'll go with this one.
All right, Mr. Forten, any discussion? Nope. Mr. Keller, any discussion?
Just just so I'm clear, that's about fifteen dollars less than the last proposal.
Exactly fifteen dollars less.
Okay.
Mr. Bradrick?
Fifteen dollars. Wow.
Yeah, I know.
I I I don't think we can do this uh, for two reasons. One. It's cosmetic at best as to the fifteen dollar cut. Yeah, more more importantly, more importantly. I think the voters should have some sense of what this is going to cost them. And yes, we can set the mill rate at some future time, but magically, when we had this the last time. Everyone knew that we were anticipating a three quarter mil increase. We don't know that now. We can't tell the voters what might happen. We're just throwing a number out there. Uh, because it's fifteen dollars less than the max in prop forty six. I don't think that's doing a service to the people who elected us. I think we have to do this in conjunction. With some thoughts of how we would pay for this and what it's gonna cost the taxpayers should this pass.
Well, as we mentioned earlier, that will be the next discussion and probably. Uh, what we would do is. When uh, if in fact this is approved. Uh, we would tell the taxpayers prior to uh, the town meeting referendum. That in fact, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of point seven five mils plus uh. Some money's drawn from the general fund reserve. Just like we did with the uh, last budget that we recommended. Anything else? Right? Anything else? Did he mute?
Yeah.
Roy, you're muted right now. Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is Woz. Okay. And this is Perkins Cothler. All right, so we have a proposal to uh. Go to a max of twenty five, two oh three, four ninety six. And reduce each of the previous. Recommended budgets by sixteen thousand one hundred dollars. Uh. Mr. Jamar.
Hi.
Mr. Forten. Nay. Mr. Keller.
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick?
Nay.
Mrs. Woz.
Aye.
And I will say aye as though the motion carries. Now we can go on to discuss what we're going to put out there in the public for uh. What the mill rate may or tend to be.
I mean, I I'm if if for if you're looking for suggestions, um, I mean. Do we wanna float it up to a mil? The only reason I would say that, I know that's a big increase. Um, I mean, to be fair, some towns see that more than that in an average year, but seeing as we've had a zero increase the last three years, um, up to a mil. I don't know. What what do people think? And Karen, if if my calculations are correct. If we did. A point seven five, we're still looking at taking a large chunk out of the general fund balance and um. How large a chunk would the finance director be comfortable with?
Fifteen dollars. We would actually, if we went, if we stayed at the original point seven five mil proposed mil increase, it would generate approximately five hundred and thirty six thousand eighty one dollars in revenue. We would still need to take a um. A balance of five sixty four, eight seventy five from the surplus.
And from your view as the financial director of the town, um, how do you? Is that too much? I mean, if we cut it by a couple hundred thousand dollars with a one mil type of increase. Would that make a difference? I mean, I know I know it would, but I mean, as far as keeping the fund balance where it should be, would that make a difference?
I my personal suggestion would not be to take more than half out of that surplus, so.
Yeah.
You know, I wouldn't dip in any more than like, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand. So if we could meet half on that dipping into the surplus, that would be a big step for this year. And then we can address the issues next year based on the new grand list, what the rebound has brought into the town. Um, had a lot of new houses going up right now that will be on the new grand list in in um, October. So, you know, that that's what I I would like to see.
And that would be a mill right now.
I don't have my.
Wait a minute, at one mil?
One mil, seven, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy five. So if we.
You'd be firing three six, one ninety six.
If we went down a little bit, um, to come up to the difference between the two. Um.
What was that number you said, Dave? Three eight six, one ninety six if we were at a mil.
I'm sorry, three what?
Three six, one nine six would need to come from the unreserved general fund. If we did the mill. The mill rate would change slightly, so it's gonna. Kind of pull around a little bit, but that's close.
Yep.
Well, it's not half, but it's.
No, but that that period must have had that.
Well, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going over a mil.
No.
Okay, let's let's keep it at that. So if we could, if we could keep it to a one mil increase, that would be, um, what did you say, Dave? I just wanna add it back. Okay, hold on.
You mean six?
One one oh oh nine seventy one.
Three eight six, one nine six. Yeah, three six, one nine six.
Yep. So if we could at least do that, I think it's start. If if it gets voted down, gonna have to come back and I would say. We're gonna have to make additional cuts, but I agree with Jeff. We. Some point, we could let the townspeople make this decision if they're willing to pay this. And I agree with Charlotte. We have a lot of new people moving in. They're buying, you know, houses that are four, five hundred thousand dollars. They get children going into the schools and they're coming from areas that are, they're used to paying more taxes. And I think that their voices this time may be heard. I don't know. I'm just. A lot of people are new and they don't know about prop forty six. They don't quite understand how it works. So all we can do is take a chance and if it doesn't pass, we'll be sitting back here and.
I'm fine with paying our bills.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't like creating a lot more bills than I have income. That's my real issue. So we gotta put it out here. And whatever, if the townspeople really want the increase, then they should pay for it.
Yeah, correct.
That's gonna be their decision now. My job is only to try to 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 find what's. I think most reasonable for all this is is the community. So I'm I'm fine with it. I think.
I would think we're all seeing huge increases, gas. You know, food, everything is just increasing and at some point, you know, unfortunately, it comes out of our pockets, all of us taxpayers. So. Um, if people don't like it, they can vote it down and we'll be sitting back here trying to figure out. Not that I'd like to do that, but.
I'll hold on to it.
It's something that um, we have to at least give people a chance to vote.
I'd say. Prefer to have to stay the point seven five, but I don't think that's realistic. So I think putting out a one mil increase, um, you know, the fact we haven't had mill increases for years and it's probably. Like a point three three. Backup uh, for a number of years. Um, I think we should put it out there and like I said, if there's the people of Woodstock. Can't accept that, don't tell us.
And and then we're gonna have to reduce the budget.
But if we don't put it out, we'll don't know if they'll accept it.
Right.
So I I'm not happy going full mill, but um, I I could go.
I was. Anybody else have anything to add on that? Yeah, okay, uh, I would like to uh. Get a motion to recommend that the uh, selectmen. Warn a town hearing. As soon as possible. So then we can move on.
Yeah, town meeting.
No, I didn't say referendum. I said town meeting.
No, you said town meeting.
You're not counting. Town meeting.
Yeah, you're giving me the look, so I just wanted to correct.
Yeah, so you you need a motion on the one mil or do you need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion for that. We just we'll just throw that out there as this is what. Your responsibility.
Can we have a consensus?
We, yes, we can. Uh, David?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I already said I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Right, uh, Roy?
Does that mean?
Right, we're talking about putting it out there that it's possibility of a one mil increase. That would be what we would project to the people with the fact that we're going to the limit of prop forty six roughly. So we're just, we're just looking for a consensus that we put that out there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, since I started at the top, I guess I should be okay with it.
All right. Are you with Roy?
So just for the record, I don't want a one mil increase, but I.
No, I I agree.
Just to be clear.
Hey. Roy, are you? Okay, right, uh. Basically, what we're gonna do is is uh, throw out the uh, twenty five million, two hundred, three thousand, one ninety six dollars. To a vote with people. Could expect somewhere in the range of one mil increase. And let them vote on it and if in fact. It's turned down, then we'll have to come back and reduce the budget. All right? Are you on board with that? He's not there. We don't have a motion, so. No, it's not a motion. Well, we do have a, we do have a consensus.
Put that sixteen one.
Yes, I do. I'm I'm gonna give that to you right now. Okay, so so what we're looking at uh, presently. If in fact the budget goes to twenty five thousand, two hundred, three, four ninety six. We reduce the uh. General government budget in the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars. The new amount for the uh. General government will be five million, four hundred fifty eight thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars. And we reduce the uh, Board of Ed budget in the amount. Of sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars. The new number there would be nineteen million, seven hundred forty five thousand, two hundred nine dollars. Again, the total twenty five million, two oh three, four ninety six. And that would uh. That would amount to uh, two point two seven five percent overall increase.
Mike, can you repeat the percentage increase, please?
Uh, two point two seven five roughly. So did we uh, we never voted on the uh?
No, I asked for a consensus, so. Thank you, and I will make the motion to request the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting. For uh, during the new proposed budget.
I'll second that. We have a motion and we have a second to request the selectmen. To schedule a town meeting. For the purposes of reviewing the budget with the public before it goes to referendum. No. Any further discussion on that? Hearing that, Mr. Jamar.
Hi.
Mr. Forten.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick?
Aye.
Mrs. Woz.
Aye.
And myself as an I, so that is unanimous. All right, moving on. Public comment. Do we have? Anyone here? Mr. Paul Cap.
I've been involved with this budget process for fourteen years. There's never been a year where it said, everybody's doing great. It's, we're prospering, everything's wonderful. So this is a good time to maybe ask for a little bit more. There's no such thing as a good time. I think a mistake's been made by not increasing over the last three years and you're feeling it now. Because a little, the little pill is much easier to swallow over three years than the big one at the end. And that's what we're up against now. Moving forward in the future, I would be careful about not having a small increase. You're never going to see it go backwards. I just don't ever see that happening. So I would ask that just while it's nice to, to give people a break for three years in a row, it's kind of like the young couple deciding, well, let's wait for a good time to have a kid. You know, well, there is no such thing as a good time. Cost of living, cost of goods, cost of everything is going to just continually, continually rise. So it would be much easier for the taxpayer to swallow a little bit of an increase in the mill rate every year than to go for a one, a one-mill now. So now we're, we're asking them to swallow a big pill and it's going to be difficult. But I'm glad to see that you're going to that level because I think we need to start there. We need to let the taxpayers speak.
Anyone else?
I, I agree with Sharon. I, again, I, I don't want to go back and revisit last year with these repeating words of last year, so.
Okay, do we have anyone online there that would like to comment?
I, I want to say something. I, I just, something was brought to my attention. Can you repeat the motions that were made, that we made when it came to the town meeting? I'm, I'm getting something saying that the motion may not be correct. I just want to make sure we have it.
Just the wording was to review the, of the town budget.
I don't know.
Was the word used. And I thought it was going to be just to send the budget to the referendum.
No, that's the, the point is when we do that. Yes, I, I misunderstood what it was. I apologize for the rough, to make sure we're on the same page.
Even, so we have to have a whole meeting to get comment even though the Board of Selectmen will, in their setting of that meeting will say that it's going to adjourn to a referendum. We still have to have that meeting for that whole comment.
Yes, but that adjournment doesn't happen.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So I, I was reading that and I wasn't, I just.
No, we're good, okay. Crystal, do you have anyone?
I think Megan had raised her hand.
Yes. Yes. This is Barb Morris. You have a comment for us?
Just really quick. I certainly understand the importance of the discussion when it comes to the mill rate and the tax rate and certainly the importance of educating the public. Because I do think when people in general will come to vote for a budget, they are voting on what the tax rate would be or what their presumption the tax rate would be for the most part. So in addition to the annual town meeting, is there anything that could be done, should be done to educate the public on the discussion that was had tonight since the vast majority did not attend?
From a personal point of view, I think the biggest problem that you have in town is apathy. As long as it doesn't cost people anything, they really don't care. And that's why they don't participate. And if they, if they were concerned, they would, they would participate, try to find out what's going on. If they want to in fact wait until it's on the ballot and show their displeasure at that time, that's fine too because, I mean, we, we can't force them to do anything. And, and, and I don't think that, that it's, it's our job to go out there and hand feed them information either. I mean, the information is available. It's available on the town website. It's available in the public forum here and that's, that's all I have to say.
We will be in the town meeting too.
Yes, they will have the opportunity at the town meeting, correct.
But I mean, when, when they, when the selectmen warn the town meeting, they will read the call and in that call will have all the information that what people will vote on, including a proposed mill increase. So that will be a public, there will be a legal notice in the paper. It'll be, the call will be read at the Board of Selectmen's special meeting when they've warned that. Then, you know, a lot of times it goes on the website, it goes to Winnie and things that we put on like the, the town's Facebook. So there is a lot of social media that should be able to get the word out.
Thank you, Karen. I wasn't aware that possibly the additional discussion regarding the mill rate would be included in the call as well. Thank you.
Anything else? Megan, anything else?
No, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, nothing to see.
Okay, hearing that. Any other remarks from the board? Michelle?
Let's hope we don't have to get back together.
Not just David, no. Jeff, you have anything else before we call for adjournment?
Nope, just wondering why nobody invited us to show up in person, but I won't take it personally.
It was in, it was in me with all the information that you were emailed.
I, I looked at the agenda. I'm, I'm, I'm half joking. And the agenda.
You requested that all of your.
The agenda, it said Zoom meeting, so that's what I did.
Okay. Roy, did you have anything else you wanted to add before we adjourn? Roy?
I have nothing.
Okay.
You echo, everyone echoes in that room. I'm better here on Zoom.
Okay. All right, then motion for adjournment is in order.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Mr. Kelleher in seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Well, I thank you all very much. Everyone, please be safe and we look forward to seeing you at the town meeting.